Sheriff's Board Work Session. It is Monday, September 12th, 2022. It is 9:08 a.m. This is set to go until 4 p.m. This is the hybrid meeting. We're in Building 1, Room 280. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina Mejia, the Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Ty Mensah. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards. In the boardroom, we have County Manager Ramiro Chavez, as well as Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell. The topic on today's agenda is Budget Review Work Session, and we have many of our financial staff joining us for that this morning. So with that, Robin, do I hand it straight to you?
I think so. Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you, Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager, and joined today by the, the budget team, both in the room and on Zoom, and I'm gonna ask them to introduce themselves this morning.
Yes, I am Nicole Martinez. I am the Fiscal and Budget Manager.
Patty Rosetto, part of the budget team.
And Jennifer Smith, Budget Analyst.
Diana Aaron's Budget Analyst.
She's muted.
Can you say that again? There's a little delay.
She's muted, I know.
Go ahead.
I'm Diana Aaron's Budget Analyst.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so this morning is a continuation of the review that we began on Wednesday. We have some updated numbers for you. We're gonna go through that first. Then we have a preview, if you will, of the big items. And you will recall the long sheets with line-by-line detail of what offices and departments have asked for. We've got the policy, the maintenance, and the revenue ready for you today. So we'll take a look at that, and you can see what the big items that form this request are. And then we have one or two of the financial plans for your review. Just so you start to get a feel for where we're going, and a preview of what's coming in our first work session week in October. So we will take a break this morning from 11:30 to 1:30, a long lunch break, because we know that there are other things that commissioners have on their calendars today. So with that, I'm gonna jump in on the documents that have been updated, and I will figure out how to share my screen. So the first document in your packet is the Financial Status Report for this year. It's like this. And the thing that got updated on this, you will recall that the beginning fund balance was incorrect on the document that you had, so we updated that. You'll see that currently, at the end of this year, we're anticipating an ending fund balance of just under 39, no, not 39, 38 million dollars, which is a few million above the latest estimate from our Financial Services Team, Darren Bennett. And one of the reasons that this is higher is I include an amount for lost revenue from ARPA. So it's higher by at least 1.5 million for that reason alone.
Yeah, Darren Bennett's projection is 35.6.
Right. So when you adjust for that, we're pretty close. So any questions about year-end for this year? Heck, we might not need the year-end. Somehow, I don't think that's true. All right. So we also updated the forecast and the forecast model. And you heard me say last week that we were still scrubbing numbers. And I am gonna say I'm sorry to report that almost everything went up, not down. So we knew that the COLA for the sheriff wasn't quite right. We found the accurate numbers for that. We had a new request come in from the sheriff's office that I will tell you about in a moment. And then we found a few other things that should have been added in that we did. Like the flip side of a transaction, they were not big, but the adjustment to the COLA and the new item from the sheriff is rather large. So I'm gonna pull up the forecast model and show you where we're at now. Here's the model. You have H3. So if the board were to fund everything as requested, and I just say that for the purpose of the conversation, I know that you won't do that. But if you did, we would go to an ending fund balance next year where we'd be okay, of 29 million dollars. But then, because all of the adds, with very few exceptions, are ongoing costs, they're requested to be ongoing, we very quickly run the fund balance down to far less than it should be. And this graph is also in your packet. So trying to make it a little bigger on the screen. There is no way that the board can afford to fund the entire amount, because even though we're in the black now, the ongoing expenditures, including the COLAs, grow at a rate that is much greater than the revenue will grow. And this is, I mean, you hear me say this every time, but so later today, after we review these documents, I'm gonna come back to this model, and we'll talk about what can the board actually afford. These are the revised numbers. And I will say once again, we continue to scrub the numbers. I'd say that we're pretty close to them being stable at this point. But there may still be a few places where we'll see some minor changes. But I'm pretty confident that we're where we need to be.
And you're on here, and you're talking about the ending fund balance down.
Yeah, how it, yep, ending, you see it reflected also. It goes right up to the beginning. Whatever the ending fund balance is in the current year goes up and becomes the beginning fund balance in the following year. You see tax growth, and three property tax growth in accordance with what the assessor has given us for new values, been the new updates. While there is steady growth there, there is the impact that I shared with you regarding how the increased value has a negative impact on what comes into the general fund because of the set-asides for mental health and EDI and for veterans. We also had overstated property tax in 2023 in the original budget. So when you look at the revenues, you'll see an adjustment down. Then sales tax, we had forecast 10% for this year. I've adjusted that down to 5%, and then 5% in future years. So you see there is growth in sales tax built in, but not as high as it had been. And then assuming lost revenue of 1.5 million a year. And the other items, mainly grants, other revenue, which we'll go through in detail. The increase for the indirects, which you heard from Ron Haney when he presented the cost plan. And then the policy level. And this forecast does assume that we will continue to reduce 250,000 a year in the road levy shift. So that's in here too.
Robin, can we see this without kind of any of, kind of to see where we're at right now without any of the additions to the policy and kind of see the chart on where we're at?
So we take out all the policy clauses. And we take out the policy revenue. And you're just above the cash flow need, but still not close to the two-month ending fund balance.
So this is currently where we're at.
If you added nothing, if you did not approve a COLA, or if offices and departments had to approve a COLA, if you did not provide additional funding for the sheriff, the contracts the sheriff just signed, medical increases, there's no reason to not approve grants. If you didn't approve the cost pool, the risk pool, not the cost pool, the risk pool, we have to do indirect rates. This is just to carry forward, but let's say you said no.
Robin, I've got a question for you. Say if we didn't approve contracts that we've already signed, does that mean that we're not obligated to those contracts?
That means that you're not obligated to put additional money in the sheriff's budget. We're obligated to pay for those things. So the sheriff would have to find ways to absorb that in his current budget, which could mean leaving vacant positions or reducing other types of expenditures. But if you did all those things, I'm just checking up here to see what we would need to, those things we wouldn't change, then you're doing more than great. You have some room to spend, but you can't buy it all. And the things that are the big-ticket items, which we will start talking about in just a few minutes, are the things that are driving this, the COLA and the risk pool being the biggest ones. I mean, if, let, I'm gonna undo all of that. So let's put it all back in. So if we
So if we keep the COLAs and the
If we
I'm just, I'm not laughing at you.
If we pull out the policy and take out the contribution to the, our risk fund, and you can't put nothing there, but let's say we did, then we're like right where we need to be.
Yeah, but we should, I don't even think we ought to be contemplating things that we know we're gonna do. We ought to talk about the other things.
Well, that's, you're gonna have to choose to not do something big.
So I mean, but, okay, we're not gonna not have insurance. I guess, unless you're saying, okay, we don't have to have insurance. We'll just take our own care.
You have to have insurance. I'm not suggesting you don't have insurance. What I'm suggesting is that right now, we maintain our risk pool, and I think it's about like 88% of the actuary. The, our partnership with the shared risk pool is that we must have at least 80%. So maybe you start to fund it in 80%, not 88%. That's the, that's the policy decision there.
What's that number? 80% of what? What does that mean?
It's, so the actuary, every, every year, every other year, we have, the actuary for risk does an assessment of all of the potential lawsuits. And if they all close today, if every one of them paid out and closed today at the actuary's estimate, then you must have in your fund 80% of that, that number. That's what we have to fund at.
Is that state law that says that?
That is a good question for Tammy, and Tammy will come in in the first week of October to chat with you about that very thing.
How much, I mean, going from 88 or 85 or whatever to 80, how much, how far is that?
I'd have to look, I'd have to look at how close that gets you, 'cause the forecast we currently have in is 4 million dollars. We do the contributions to get to a flat 4 million, and we'll have to ask Tammy, how close or how much over is that to the 80%? Because she, you know, her comment was she'd be more comfortable if it was higher. And it was like, that's, wouldn't we all? Yeah.
But just like, from a ballpark standpoint, like, is it?
I don't wanna throw a number out there.
Well, I mean, I know, I'm just saying, would it, is it anywhere near offsetting the increase that we're facing?
Probably not. Not the full amount, no.
It would just mitigate the increase?
All right. So you can't, you can't fund it all, but and there are certain things that you really need to do. So one of the things you asked for is when we looked at that historic trend of how much every office and department in the general fund has reverted every year for the last decade. You asked how much of that was salary savings and how much of it was other things. So that's an analysis that we'll be doing, and we'll have that ready for you in early October. All right. So that's the current state of the forecast, and we're gonna come back to this. Because the last thing I want you to do today is come to an agreement on approximately how much you can afford to spend this year. Along with all the new numbers, we also updated this, what we started calling the colorful chart. Page 5 in the PDF. Style 2022, General File Request. And share. Public can see what we're talking about. I made this a little bigger. So again, the, the things that changed were the numbers in the midterm maintenance and policy level. Things got moved around a little bit, and we refined the numbers. So what you see here is there is about 2.8 in maintenance level, 5.3 in policy level. That policy level includes, I'm gonna, does it include the risk pool?
Yes, it does.
Yes, thank you. Then we'll check as we move stuff around. So because again, there's a policy decision to be made there. It includes the COLAs. And those are the biggest drivers in policy, as you'll see in just a moment. But this is the breakdown by office and department.
Is that? 5.3, policy level, midterm. Is that a high number for a midterm compared to, I know we've only gone through the full by any in once or twice, but
Yeah, so I want to say no. I wanna say no, but I think it is. And again, the, the, I mean, Ramiro and I were chatting last week, and one of the things he said to me that is absolutely true is every year in the budget process, we run into something. Something happens. Last year, we lost a million dollars in shared revenue from the state. Just 'cause the county's revenues went up too high, we no longer qualify for something we used to get every year. The Blake decision hit one year. The, there's always something that comes through. And we always manage to find a way to manage it. So there's always something, but this year, it's the risk pool increases extreme.
That came, honestly, as a surprise, as you know, out of the blue, totally out of the blue.
Right. So if it weren't for that, Right, so if it weren't for that, uh and we weren't feeling the pressure of inflation, uh which has driven up our COLAs to some degree, and also the medical inflation at twelve percent instead of five percent. Those are the really big pieces, and you'll see that when we go through the worksheets. We got some big hits. Um so I I think that this five million dollars is on the high side. I think that the maintenance is right about what we could expect for growth.
Okay.
Yeah, because we were expecting some growth, but we weren't expecting this.
I I would echo that five million is to be pretty high. Maybe at, not last year, maybe who, the commission here came. So you might recall, it was about two point five to three in the midterm, and the board authorized only one point five, right? And that was, you know, that was how much the board could afford. Even at that time, uh it was distributed by percentages at some point, based on the groupings that we had.
Right.
So there's options, um but uh at least from my point of view, this seems to be high as a midterm.
Alright. So we are moving right along, and we're gonna start going through the request sheets.
We're gonna go department by department, or are you gonna go chunk, or like category by category?
We're going by categories, and we're starting with the revenue.
I'm gonna grab a glass.
We're not asking you to vote on each one or another. This is just, this is the first.
Yeah, no, no decisions, no decisions today. This is the first look.
This is the presentation from the staff and the requests that we have received.
So what page we move into?
So your page on page six comes in. That was.
So if they look like this, and the first one we're gonna look at is revenue. To make this one big enough for people to see. Uh yes, yes, thank you. Alright, so as I usually do, I'm just gonna walk you down this list. Um and if you have questions, stop me. Stop moving, bring ruler. Uh so the first item is uh line number one, the change request is M two oh nine. It's from the auditor, uh it is a reduction in the general fund of um to more accurately reflect the um, they don't say what type of revenue, but it's um passports. It's mainly passports, a reduction in anticipated passport revenue.
Did they say why?
Uh well, they.
It had to do, um I think mostly with timing of the um the ID, the um where you.
Real ID.
Enhanced ID, um where people would be required to get their uh passports, and that's been delayed, I think, until March.
If I'm.
Check twenty three?
Yeah.
The the note here talks about recording and.
Some of it is from recording fees.
Well, because of the front, because of um increased housing costs and interest rates. They don't mention passports in this note.
It's not in the note, but it's in the in sub, in the assumption, and it's being pushed back to May twenty twenty three for the real ID enforcement.
Right, so they think their passport traffic is less due to the real ID. Um but you may recall that they increased passport revenue last year, uh and the board agreed to fund a position based on that, and the revenue is not materialized.
That's my question, what? Is the, what's the need?
Well, they've, they, what what is the need?
I mean, if that person's not gonna be busy doing.
They're very busy, they're doing, uh I know that they're.
But that was the revenue that was gonna take care of that position, wasn't it?
The revenue was gonna take care of that position. The revenue is not materialized. We don't know if it's got something to do with the um, uh their assessment is it's the real ID.
And they haven't filled that position yet.
They have not filled.
They have not filled the position.
Yet. So. So that is um, that's the revenue going down.
So that that would show up in reversion from the auditor?
We would hope that that shows up in reversions from the auditor.
And does it?
Well, reversions from the auditor are currently projected to be, it is a significant amount coming back from the auditor.
Five hundred and seventy two thousand.
Uh five hundred and seventy two thousand.
That's the amount they've been.
So. Yeah, almost exactly the revenue reduction. That's what they're reverting this year, which is, I'm going to say, a coincidence. It is not.
There's not, that's not the.
Do not align them.
Yeah, I can see I'm in trouble looking at them.
No, they they shouldn't be, they're not a one to one thing.
You're not related.
That is totally a coincidence.
It just happened to work out that way.
Yes, budgets often do that.
You know, of course, you have to pick the number and just coincide it.
Well, I mean, you you gotta look at the numbers once.
Oh, I know, but no, it's your number.
Yeah, no, it's weird.
One is revenue, the other one is overall expenditures.
Right, and and the that reduction in expenditures is from a lot of things. It's not all about the passport person not being hired.
Okay.
Right, so we can get a breakdown of this, how much of this is passports and how much is recording fees? Do you have that handy, if you pull up Questica?
I don't know.
It doesn't say in here what. It doesn't say in the detail which is which?
It does, so you've got.
Oh, does it?
Yeah, in um election services, um.
Election services.
Election services, you've got three hundred and twenty, that's actually the largest part.
Oh.
Um you've got auditors filing, which is a hundred and twenty thousand. Passports is one thirty nine, and then seven thousand for um Ms. White, yes, that's just a little bit. That's actually.
Okay, so much, most of it in election fees.
Yeah, and the election, if I remember correctly, had something to do with um, um God, it had to do with the off year, and that they had to have an election or something. I would have to double check on that one.
Well, because the state reimbursed the the revenue from elections and they and it and they, it's not in the odd year, in the even year.
They do it in the even years now, but that's uh, that's a lot more than that, and that's an increase.
That's an increase.
That shouldn't decrease the twenty three now.
No, just building up on what.
Right, so we will add the auditor, a visit from the auditor to the list for early October to talk about what's changing in their revenues.
'Cause if we, if we, if we're losing the revenue that was gonna support the unfilled position, shouldn't we just eliminate the unfilled position?
I would recommend that.
Just to make sure it doesn't get filled and isn't supporting.
Yeah, you 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 don't have that option, obviously, because the this, that position is fully funded, although the board didn't put a budget proviso on that.
Right.
Just created. There was an assumption it's gonna be covered.
Well, it was supposed to continue.
Yeah, it was an assumption it's gonna be covered by.
The revenue was supposed to continue to.
The possible, but certainly we had that option.
So we will invite the auditor to come in October. Uh the next item is from the the reduction in the clerk's uh revenue, and this is mainly uh different types of um collections. They're assessing less fines. Um there are less, uh help me here, who's got the clerk?
I do, but hold on. I'm not there.
Overall, I know that the the court is um doing less fines, less criminal fees.
I've got it, Patty, you can tell.
Okay.
Fewer mental health billings from previous years, less criminal fines and fees being assessed by courts, and interest being weighed on criminal cases.
What's a mental health billing? I don't know what that means.
I don't, I don't either. So we'll, we'll look into that.
Oh, is that related to the um?
Mental health court?
Maybe ITA court costs.
The ITA, yeah, that's the.
Could be.
And or adoption, that's interesting, that, 'cause they've expanded the number of courts and locations.
That perhaps they they would expect them to be reimbursed that much, they didn't get reimbursed us, what they were expecting, that's what it is. I don't think they they they.
They locked them down?
It's just more came down in terms of reimbursement.
Yeah.
That's my assumption, it's related to the ITA.
Yeah, that makes sense.
We'll look, we'll look into this.
I mean, it makes sense that that's what it's connected to, doesn't, I don't know why they're getting lower amounts, but.
Right, well, we do have a proviso that um the approved expenditures need to match the approved revenue from that source, so we'll look into that too. Um then M twenty three oh two, we're on line three. Uh this is the adjustment to the sales tax revenue. About a million dollars is the compounded number going down next year. M twenty three oh four is the property tax revenue. Uh the impact, you see I've pulled it down this year to reflect the forecast, and next year um reflects the forecast uh and the uh reduced amount due to the DD and the veteran set asides. So it's close to a million dollar hit in property tax in the general fund. And then you see the adjustments uh in the other fund as well. The big winner here, if you will, is um Medic One, and that is because you will recall that the voters approved a levy lift for Medic One. It is a um six year step up uh levy shift with an increase in every year. So instead of the one percent cap for Medic One, their limit is a flat seven percent increase every year for the next five years. So their increase is substantial.
I'm not sure I understood the property tax, what what is going on with property tax?
So in property tax, in the general fund, I've done two things. I adjusted it down for the forecast, because we're coming in under forecast. So that has an effect in both years.
If you wanna pay, that's a million dollars, right?
That's um between the two years, yeah.
Or, I mean, close to.
Um that's for that variance, I've adjusted for the forecast. That we always have a variance, and then we rounded up. So I'm not rounding up as much as I had, uh and the base is less, so that's adjusted down. And then the um, I showed you last week, the impact of the extreme increase in the total value, um because the um mental health and DD and veterans have a flat rate that is not adjusted by the one percent, they get their flat rate. So that's a half a million dollars that the general fund that completely offsets our one percent increase. This is why those two earmarks need to get out of the general fund.
I would recommend the board to include that in your legislative agenda for next year, to keep trying. 'Cause that's the, that's the impact.
I still think the bigger priority is that risk, the insurance business about separating that out that, um I thought you, counselor, you got, you got the right term on that, I always miss the term.
Oh, joint separation.
Yeah, joint separation liability.
Absolutely, that's the, that's the.
Still the biggest issue.
So that's the impact on the general fund, and then the big rise in Medic One is because of the levy lift. So those are the, oh, and so you'll also see here that the state shared revenue is going up. That's because we have only by a hundred thousand, but that's no small number for us. Um and that is because the state has changed the calculation for marijuana. So we'll get more out of the marijuana.
How much more?
We'll, we'll get a hundred thousand dollars.
But still not much.
I mean, still not much, though.
Yeah, of the hundred retail outlets that, hold on, can you?
Like there's a county produce a lot of sales tax in that business, and we get just a portion of it.
Alright, we're gonna go to maintenance next. Share.
Maybe just to emphasize, commissioners, we are not asking you to make decisions.
No decisions today.
If you have any questions, sir, we will get those questions and answer those questions.
Alright. Um maintenance, so the first item uh is uh the assessor has asked for an additional ten thousand dollars out of the REIT tech fund um to cover the cost of postage increases.
And has there been postage, is postage going up?
Yes, postage is going up.
How are we doing in that fund? The REIT eleven sixty.
That fund, there there's, so that fund is fine. We'll, we'll bring the um financial plan in October. Uh this is the fund where you have given authority to the assessor that if he has gen room in his general fund budget, he can shift costs out of the REIT tech fund to the general fund. So his general fund generally doesn't uh revert anything, because he chooses to preserve the fund balance in the REIT tech fund to make it last as long as possible. And the board's given him authority to make that shift, specifically around an FTE that he has there.
Do you, do you have the completion of the sentence on that, uh to meet rising postage?
Oh, my apologies that there, that's cut off.
In addition to.
Rising postage and printing costs in addition to, what's the rest of that? New construction birth, new construction birth. It's all about communication. The next item is the um COLA for the sheriff deputies. So we've moved that to maintenance, it had been in policy, that's one of the adjustments that we made. Um and the impact on the general fund is four hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars, and that is just the difference, um well, the difference is in this year, this is the full four point one percent. Then uh M three oh seven, dropping to the green.
Can I ask a question about the sheriff's law enforcement? Um I know some road fund covers some of their services, so I'm wondering, is this something that can be covered by road fund?
So.
I know some of their activities are, but not sure if this would qualify better.
They have one deputy, I think it's only one deputy, two deputies now, that are covered by the direct payment of road fund. that are covered by the direct payment of road fund um on a uh memorandum of understanding between the sheriff and public works.
So is it, is, is a, is a true cost? So if their, if their salaries are increased by the cost of living increases, those will be accordingly paid by the road fund.
That's right. Okay.
For those two, I was.
Yeah.
Just for those two.
So there is, there is not, um so there is not a blanket in a way the road fund.
Oh, Romero, perhaps you could describe what those two uh deputies do.
So there is two elements to this. Um is the, is the, is the um road uh transfer, which you will familiar with, that it covers activities related to traffic law enforcement. There is no, both the two deputies, um the public works contract to provide traffic control, reconstruction activities. So it's two separate things and, and public works and the sheriff's office work very well during construction activities when they provide that assistance, uh traffic control. And, and that is the MOU that Robin is describing.
Because I'm not seeing that kind of road fund.
No, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't see those, that's pennies.
Oh, just the penny.
Cause it's just on those two FTEs, right?
Yeah, it's just couple of dollars, yeah.
And then just the delta, then perhaps those, those two deputies will be as a result of the cost of living increase, you will not be seeing this significantly.
Hmm, right, so what they can bill, they will, but it's just not that much. And we can't, you know, your choice there is you could choose to increase the road diversion amount. That comes out of the road fund.
I thought we had, I thought that diversion was set at kind of what the maximum for the activities that, that are coverable.
Oh, oh no. Yeah, no, it's, it's far, at this time, it is way under the coverable amount. I think that the last information I got from Heidi Thompson was that the amount we could cover is over two million.
Right, that's a one point five.
And we, the diversion is one point five.
Okay, so it's not.
So eligible activity is actually supposed to two point five.
Oh, two point five.
So two point, let's just say two point five, you take, we increase diversion and reduce road shift levy shift by that equivalent amount. Is that a good thing to do? Because I mean, from what I understood, it's a little more defensible to the public why you're doing the road shift toward the diversion activities that are connected, have the nexus with the road stuff. That's why they're cover eligible versus road shift where you're just taking it stealing, so to speak, some people like to call it, to cover whatever.
Yeah, I, 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 you know, I always had a difficult time to hear the stealing from the road fund.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying.
No, I, I know that you're verbalizing it.
There's a different argument, you know, there, it's slightly more.
Those two are the road diversion and the road levy shift are allowable by law.
Correct.
If I, yeah, certainly you can increase the road diversion if you want to emphasize the traffic law enforcement. Uh more, you know, that is a cover maybe a two point five, that's the last number that I saw. And uh continue to reduce the road diversion at the end, uh the general fund will be almost zero now.
Right, I'm just saying, it's if we're stealing, I mean, if we're shifting um X amount of dollars, to me, it's better to have more of it be a diversion, cause there's got, there's a legal nexus to the road fund versus the levy shift where there's no legal nexus to the road fund.
Yeah, this, yeah.
So, so there is a nuance though, um when, when, so, I'll step back even more. Uh the general fund levy is assessed against all property throughout the county in the incorporated and the unincorporated, the unincorporated area. The road levy is assessed only in the unincorporated area. So when you do the diversion, the road diversion, where we just pick up one point five million out of the road fund and put in the general fund. Um that amount of money was paid solely by property owners in the unincorporated area. And it can only be used on activities performed in the unincorporated area. So when the sheriff tracks the activity of their road deputies only on unincorporated roads, the benefit is tied to the source of the tax. When we do the levy shift, what you're doing is, is changing the amount of levy. You're reducing the levy against the unincorporated properties and you're increasing the levy against all properties. So there's actually uh the road levy decreases, that, that price per million, the mileage in the road levy decreases more than the general fund levy increases. Price per, per thousand in the properties. And I know it's a subtle nuance, but I wanna say that when you change it to the current expense and you're using it on things that benefit everyone in the county, everyone in the county is paying. So it's when it's not tied strictly to sheriff deputies in the unincorporated area, when it's, you're using it for things that are for the entire county, broader services, like we don't track where that dollar goes, so I can't say it's specifically used for X. But in general, those services are services for the entire county.
And that is why the road levy shift is taken right off the top before it hits the road fund in terms of the uh.
For the levy, it's.
For the levy, so you just take it right off the top and put it on the general fund.
So why there's not a separate line item for it, we can't track it, we can't say it's specifically for this purpose.
So, but crudely speaking, you're saying the road fund diversion is taking tax that comes from the whole county, but focused, but only spending it on the um unincorporated county?
Nope, the road diversion is tax collected on only the unincorporated areas and it's spent on service only in the unincorporated areas.
Okay.
The levy shift, so.
What's the problem with that? I mean, that's.
I, I don't think there is a problem, I'm just saying that when you, when you, so part of the levy, part of the levy shift, the board specifically earmarked part of that money to go to parks. Parks benefits the whole county, the whole county pays for that. That's the benefit of the levy shift rather than, they're, they really are different. They, they don't just balance out.
Wait, wait, oh, oh, let me, let me go, do one more in for a second, let me see if I can.
It's a subtle nuance, but.
Yeah. Uh, under the property tax, there is the road levy. And this is just assess in the unincorporated areas of the county, just for board purposes, because we cannot assess in the sales. Just for talking purposes. This generates ten million. Just for talking purposes. Those ten million, and this is the road fund. Right? And the, and the road levy shift, you take, let's say minus one million here. Right, talking first, this is the road levy shift. Then the road fund gets deposited nine million. Then out of the nine million comes the road diversion. And when comes into the road fund and you take out of, as a road diversion, that is when you have to be specific on the activities that will benefit the road fund. But in essence is, it, that's how it works. The road levy is, as Robin stated, unincorporated areas. You take, right off, before it gets, hits the, 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 the road fund, you take the road levy shift out.
Right.
The general fund.
It's, it's, even that is not quite accurate. It's, it's uh, so. That were, that can be fun at the whiteboard.
Yeah.
Because it's, it is.
One fund you have to justify, the other is just allowed.
Quite complicated.
This one is yet. Yeah, the road, the road levy shift goes to the general fund with no strings attached.
No, no justification for that.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make up a number here, cause the, the road levy is X of per thousand. It's the, the road levy would have been, I need to look up the numbers, would have been one dollar per thousand. The, the levy shift, you take out of that point oh nine per thousand, I'm totally making it up. So ninety one per thousand is what creates this ten million dollars. And this is where the shift, a million comes in. Um so this is nine million off the bat. It doesn't even come here and it doesn't go to the, it never goes to the road fund.
It never goes to the road fund.
No, I mean, I mean, this road diversion never goes to the road fund. This is the diversion amount. And the total amount that goes to the road fund is A. This goes off to the general fund, but it, it retains its road fund levy identity, if you will. So this.
Because that diversion needs to benefit the road fund somehow.
Right, and this oh nine, what would have been oh nine in the road fund, when it gets to the general fund to generate a million, maybe you only need oh seven. It's a lesser impact when you spread it across all of the assessed value. Um so it's complicated.
And, and the road levy uh capacity is higher than the one point eight, just to make it more complicated. I think right now, what is the road levy uh capacity, it's two point five?
Uh two point five is the current levy shift and one point five is the current diversion.
No, what you're saying is the, the maximum of levy, you know, and the, and the profit tax is one point.
Oh, the, the, the maximum.
Is, I think is a two point seven.
I'd have to look it up, but I think it is right around there because the total combined amount can't exceed.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, there's so much math uh involved. Um this is uh unincorporated only. And this is against all Thurston County.
In terms of where it goes expended to, right?
No, in terms of where it's collected from. Taxpayers only in the unincorporated area paying to the road tax. Taxpayers in the entire county paying to the general fund.
Well, because you're shifting that levy capacity.
Because you shift the levy calculation. Levy capacity is what gets shifted in the levy shift. This is just a dollar amount that you divert.
Yeah, okay, I mean, I do understand that nuance, but I still don't understand how that relates to my point. What, if, if we're trying to max, cause to us, it doesn't really matter and it, and it's appropriate because the, the money you spend it on for the sheriff's, sheriff's jurisdiction is the unincorporated county. So there's a, you know, what's, what, why does this nuance matter to the argument of why you'd wanna maximize the diversion and not the road shift?
Because I think that uh the way you want to use the money is the driving thing.
Or the letting shift.
If you really do wanna use the money to support the sheriff, then I would say that the diversion is the way to go. Um because it is all in the unincorporated area and then you've got people in the incorporated area paying for services that they never get. Um but when you're using it to pay for courts and parks and the assessor and auditor, then the levy shift does make more sense because all of the beneficiaries pay. And that's, I, I'm gonna, I seize a moment to say that the underlying uh structure of taxes and fees, to the extent possible, should be a connection between who pays and who gets the benefit. You, you want to check that in, in the way you assess taxes and fees. Um so.
Would that mean built into the law, because we can, as you say, Chief Thompson says, you've got two point five million dollars of eligible activities, so that's.
Sure.
That's the built in answer to your, to your point. We would not be spending on anything that wasn't directly related to that. And I, I get what you're saying, if you're then, if, if you're using that and then you're reducing sheriff's budget and then you're using it sort of like a shift, then you kind of are shifting the money in a, in a sense.
Yeah.
Um.
So, I mean, it's something to think about. I, I think that either is perfectly defensible, absolutely defensible, depending on how the money is.
More paperwork, more paperwork on one than there is on the other.
Oh, it's just more math.
Well, yeah, the, the sheriff's office has to keep track of this.
Sheriff's office does keep track of this, yes.
They keep track and, and we, and we uh send to the county administration board those reports every year.
Right.
So they, 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 I mean, they.
And we're allowed only a certain amount of the crap.
They have a system down in the sheriff's office as to how they can justify that.
We're not allowed a certain amount, we, we can bill for whatever we can justify.
Well, yeah, whatever you can justify, that's your amount.
That's, that's our limit.
Yeah, and the other one, I don't think there is.
Well, and the other money is.
The other one is limited by the total amount between the two. There, there are limitations in both.
But the other one is uh on the road levy shift, you don't have any restrictions as to, and, and Robin explained it correctly
How you spend.
because the benefit you, since it goes to the general fund with no restrictions, you apply those revenues to the entire county, which provides services to all county residents.
Right.
And I think that's, that's, that's a good way to describe it.
I just, you know, when the, taking us back to twenty nineteen, when the board began the commitment to reduce the levy shift, we never said we're gonna reduce that diversion because the diversion's connected to services. We said, we're gonna reduce that, whatever it was, three and a half million dollars or whatever of levy shift. That's what we're committed to reducing, so.
It is supporting.
At a policy level, we're trying to, we're trying to say that is not as, to me, it's not as defensible because we're, we're ultimately taking resources away that we'll need for upkeep of our roads.
And I, I think that that right there, you have hit on the policy choice. Is it more important to have additional money in the road fund to maintain our roads? Or is it more important to have money in the general fund to provide general services across the county? That's the choice you're making.
But even taking the order back to what you just stated, it was probably in two thousand seventeen when the road diversion was close to three point five. And we had a conversation, many conversations with the county administration board because at that point, uh the road diversion was funded more than just sheriff deputy acti, sheriff, sheriff deputies' activities. And that was not allowed.
Prosecutor's office.
Prosecutor's office and everything else, it was an old.
Prosecutors.
It was a previous sheriff who was working with a, a, an older prosecuting attorney who managed that to happen. So we, we curtailed that back, but at that time, reducing that to the level, cause it would have an impact to the general fund. It's only then when the board started exercising the road diversion, road levy shift.
Right, because we were, you know, even though we thought that we were, and I continue to think that we were appropriately saying that to keep our roads safe, you have to prosecute the DUIs, you have to have jail space for the DUIs, you have to, we have to, since most of them are indigent, we have to provide them public defense. And the coroner, a little bit of coroner cost that we included where the time they spent uh reacting to road fatalities, it was all about traffic safety and crime. and crab determined that we could claim none of that, all on unincorporated roads. So it it's, those are the things that we had been paying for, those are the things that we continue to pay for.
So when uh it, just to globalize the conversation with the board, when the board considers additional diversion from the road fund, um, please take a look in terms of the impact to the road fund itself, because it would be less revenue, but also look at the real estate excise tax too, to maybe supplement some of that as well. Because they uh they rate two may be an option as to how you continue to fund preservation and 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 public works. So, globalizing the conversation and that may be options they or may consider in October.
Alright.
Yeah, I mean, the thing I learned this morning though is that I thought when crab, that historical, when they rolled us back from where we were, I thought we rolled back to the maximum allowed now, and now I'm hearing that we've got additional capacities if we needed it or wanted to.
Right, that's right. Alright, um, so now I think we're on in line five, which would be M oh three oh seven. This is the increase in corrections. Uh, the impact on the general fund for their uh four percent COLA is um just under five hundred and twenty thousand. Um, and then you see the impact on the other funds that support corrections. Uh, one of the things that uh will bring you in October is the detention sales tax fund, where you can review if that can bear any of this additional cost.
How is that amount figured out? And there is capacity for us to increase that number on the other funds, is what you're saying, what you just said?
Yeah, so how do we figure that out?
Okay.
We look at the financial plan for the other fund and see is there any capacity there?
Okay.
With keeping that fund whole.
And thi- this is how for items six, seven, and eight, how those numbers came out?
No, six, seven, and eight are just um calculating the COLA on the amount of salaries that are currently paid out of these other funds.
Okay.
So detention sales tax and treatment sales tax pays for a substantial amount of the costs in corrections today. So when we calculate the COLA impact, we calculate it on all the funds.
And so the general fund impact to to the sheriff's COLAs is one million dollars basically, one million sixteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, when you combine the.
Yeah, law enforcement and corrections.
Um, then the next uh line M three oh eight uh is also um law enforcement for the sheriff. And you will recall that we did a one-time uh bonus of five thousand dollars and that the deputies in their contract chose to have that paid out over ten months. And the ten months don't begin until, I wanna say October, is that right?
October, February.
Um, so the bulk of that payout happens next year. So that's what you see here.
How did that work with the other bargaining units?
The other bargaining, the other one bargaining unit that was open at the time uh chose, that was corrections. They chose to not have a bonus, they wanted a flat four percent increase in each year. And you will recall that for sheriff's law enforcement, they took the bonus and they took a three point nine percent COLA. But then they got four point one percent in the following year, so I don't think it bothers much.
And we do the same thing though for public works and.
Uh, those contracts were not open.
Those contracts are not.
Oh, they're not settled, yeah.
So right now.
That's right, they were not even open.
Yeah, right now, your on your projections, it's including a thousand dollars to the rest of employees. And in this case, we'll accept, exempt corrections because you already have lost the contract.
We did not exempt corrections, that is part of the discussion that the board will need to have.
Yes.
Who who do they want to get the bonus? Alright, so that's another three hundred and seventy-five thousand against the general fund. Then uh moving down, you see M oh four oh two. This is the treasurer's increase for postage, that is against the general fund. Um, M oh six oh four on line thirteen is uh treatment sales tax. Their costs for the T S P programs are going up, I believe that's mainly due to inflation factors. Um.
Which one was that?
That is the last line uh on page one of maintenance, it's line thirteen and the change number is M oh six oh four. Line fourteen at the top of page two um is the cost adjustments for um pension contributions, those are going up. Uh, the county share that we pay in to the um, the department of retirement system.
Robin, could you, on on that line thirteen again?
Oh, yes.
Is that current expense uh that?
No, sir, that's treatment sales tax.
Yeah, treatment sales tax, money, right?
Yep. That twenty-seven thousand will be against treatment sales tax. The board is responsible for all funds.
So I don't, can you can you explain a little bit more on on thirteen? Because the statement of need, it's just treatment sales tax, also patient care cor- programs, doesn't really.
Doesn't tell you much. Um. That one I don't know anything about, do you?
I, no, I don't.
So we can find out more by after.
Okay.
This is the first blush preview and a perfect time to ask questions.
Yeah, because it it doesn't give you much information on on that.
I don't know, there's no original information in the change request either, so we'd have to follow up.
Okay, and I would, um, my guess is it's some thing to do with inflation or COLAs or some related thing.
Yeah, it would be good to know at least so what what it's for.
Alright. So page two. Uh, pension pension contributions, the impact to the general fund is eighty-two thousand and um. I think that line fifteen should actually be all other funds, not the treasurer's non-budgeted fund for sixty-seven thousand. And when you see all other funds like this, we've just rolled them up, so you're not seeing a lot of little detail, a dollar here, two dollars there. And on line sixteen and seventeen, you see the impact due to the increase in our health benefits. And this is um that impact from going from five percent, which we had already assumed in the budget to twelve percent uh increase. They they have ten percent.
We come up briefly this week on that.
Is that a total of seventeen percent?
No, it it it's a total of twelve, we we had five in the budget, we increased it. And apparently um uh the twelve percent is is when you average out all the different plans. The highest, um, current highest standard plan increased by ten percent, but uh there were various increases. So um that is an impact of three hundred and forty-four thousand on the general fund. Um, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand in all other funds. Line eighteen, uh, the change request is M twenty-three oh three and the impact is the general fund. Our bill from uh ORCA or the Olympic Region Clean Air Agency has increased um by about five and a half thousand. And on line nineteen, uh, our increase for animal services, also against the general fund, is ninety-five thousand.
And that's worth it, uh, okay.
Sorry, I was just gonna say for animal services, the board has not discussed the budget yet, so just.
This is their estimate?
Like this, this is new to me as well.
Oh.
Because we have not discussed the budget.
We received a letter from them.
We contacted and they um recommended, I think it was a ten percent increase, um, just to be safe or something like that, and consequently, yeah.
So it might be a little less, but.
Yeah.
And then Commissioner Edwards, you had a question from ORCA?
On ORCA, that uh, that five thousand more out of general fund, that's added to what amount out of general fund?
Uh, the twenty-twenty-three total assessment is gonna be a hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty cents. That's in the description column.
I see.
It's a big payment. We have no choice, we we're required by law to participate.
It has to come out of general fund?
I don't know of any other fund that it could legitimately be paid for. Clean air. If it were a water thing, then we'd look into the storm and surface water, but it's not.
It will be stretched.
Uh, ba- bigger stretch, yeah, we also can't bill the work. General fund's kinda it.
Even if the work is sneaky?
Well, we've done a good job in preventing that, that's the most of the loss we're gonna get.
Yeah, but, yeah, we've been sued in that account, yeah. Um, well, alright, we already talked about animal services, I'm moving on to page three, line twenty. Um, is the increase um in left one medical benefit payments. You will recall that uh all retirees from left one are entitled for all of their medical expenses to be paid by the county and that is steadily going up. Then line twenty-one, M twenty-three oh eight, uh, and oh nine. Um, you see uh increase uh in revenue to fund, that's not general fund, that should be um. Oh, it's a direct appropriation, is that why that's general fund for social services?
That's right.
Okay, so this is and um, this is just increases our payment from non-departmental to support the um, the housing, the transfer that goes for housing services under the MOU. Is that changing with the restructure? We do one-half of one percent of our prior year sales tax is a contribution for the, it had been going to the housing committee, the inter-jurisdictional housing committee?
Uh, I'm not tracking all this, to be honest with you.
Okay, well, we've given that contribution every year for the past five or six years.
Yeah, the legislature can't do that.
Yeah, if that's changing under the new structure of the R H C. But I, it's my understanding that that had not changed. So that goes up every year with our sales tax increase and sales tax revenue.
Can I make a comment here? Just going back to uh line twenty. There's a lot of money in that left one retirement fund at the state level. I wonder if that wouldn't be worth asking the other county jurisdictions to look into uh authority for the counties to bill that fund annually. As far as a burden off of the current expense budget in counties, and there's thirty-nine counties that are participating.
I absolutely agree, and we had a similar conversation in the WASAC managers, um, the county managers association meeting, where um, because that pension, it's their pension fund
Right.
that is extremely overfunded.
And they're they're not gonna be able to spend it now, they're gonna steal it from some, in some fashion or another.
They they are gonna use it for something else.
So why not?
Probably other pension funds that are underfunded.
Yeah, that's possible.
But but I, yeah, we paid in to that.
This would be very legitimate, and it would save all the counties a certain amount of money.
Yes.
So I think it's worth at least putting on our legislative priority list.
I agree.
That's a good one, yes. Ramiro, can you add that too?
That's over three hundred thousand a year for us now, isn't it?
Yeah, and if if you think about our population compared to the rest of the state, I think it would be a pretty good argument for everybody to move on that. And I don't know how much resistance they'd get from um those folks in that fund, and the reason for that is because a lot of them are dying off and they haven't figured out a way to pay the fund, though, yeah, it's got more than enough to handle the need.
Right. Okay, yeah, no, that that is uh extremely good idea. Um, then we got line twenty-three.
They'll probably catch some flack for it.
Which are the increases in county dues for our associations. So see if WASAC came through, they totally earned this two thousand dollars. Um. Uh, then we got line twenty-four is in central services um facilities, the change request is M twenty-five oh three. Um, and this is an update um for for this fund, uh, because the utilities cost more, we bring in revenue off the rates. Uh, and then we have to have expenditure authority, but um we think our operating costs are going down in central services. Anticipated costs going down also on line twenty-five for central services. And then you see the offsetting uh increase. Um, costs are going up for all of the um projects, the capital projects that you've approved. Um, so the um positions, this covers the price of the positions. Page four is uh line twenty-seven. Um, E R and R, and this is one of the funds you're going to see in early October. The E R and R M and O fund uh has a challenge with fund balance because um it is paid on a two-year lag and the expenses for two year, from two years ago are less than current expenses.
Is that because of inflation being so high?
That is uh mainly driven from fuel, the fuel costs have gone up so extremely
Fuel prices.
that this fund needs an infusion to be able to stay in the black. So that's one of the funds that you'll review in early October. Line twenty-nine, uh, also the E R and R uh fund. Um, and this is the increase in authority to make purchases out of the replacement uh reserve for equipment that's going to be purchased next year. Line thirty is from Medic One. Um, they anticipate uh increased need for data support um to address their um growing IT equipment and software contracts.
But what funds is that coming out of?
That is coming from the Medic One fund.
Yeah, so that's not gonna affect us, right?
It does not affect the general fund, but again, the board approves all funds, so you have to approve this.
Yeah, but I I'd like to point out as you're going through these, which ones are general fund.
So the the funds are.
Right, it's there, but.
Right in the column.
No point in spending much time on this whole thing.
Alright, uh, line thirty-one is the IT fund. Line 31 is the IT fund. This updates their expenditure needs at the carry-forward level. Then on page five, the next three at maintenance level, also IT. You see a large amount on line 33. It's million-dollar increase to reflect the increase in the rates. And the large system replacement projects that are coming forward in the next year. But none of these are general fund. Line 34 is the payment to the debt holding account to make a payment on the bonds that are supporting ERNR. The ERP, not ERNR, it's the ERP, the replacement of Amanda.
What is the new one?
It seems TC Connect. That's what we're calling it, TC Connect. So page six is the roll-up. The roll-up starts on page five, actually. Total impact to the general fund at maintenance level, 16,000 in revenue, all in 2023. 1.9, just about 2 million in general fund in expenditures. So the big pieces here are colas, medical, and.
Better information technology, million.
That's against the info tech fund, that's not general fund. The big things are the cola, cola and medical inflation. Those are the big ones.
Okay, it's 10:31. Before we jump into policy, can I take a break?
Yep.
So then, and out of that grant, they're only spending, I've lost the page, I apologize, like 20,000 out of the 13?
Yeah, that seems to leave 13 on the table, but the little description here says they're short, so we gotta look into this one.
Okay, because that one's.
Yeah, this one's a little confusing, so we'll check that.
One second, yeah, I don't know.
We'll have better information in October. Page two is for district court. This, this has a very long story. We thought that district court needed a position for Blake, but they don't. And apparently what they were asking for is a probation counselor position that they need. So they are asking to, instead of pay for this out of Blake funding, to just pay for it from the general fund and remove the end date. Did I kinda capture that? I'm looking at Romero, he's aware of this.
Which is, which is, it doesn't meet the intended purpose, purpose in which that position was created. That position was created to deal with the Blake-related issues. So they haven't utilized that position for Blake, and now district court really is asking the board to fund this position in a permanent basis using general fund for other purposes.
What, what position does the, I mean, why not treatment sales tax? I don't know, I mean, what, I'm just kinda curious.
It's probation.
The why?
It's all probation.
Why? It can be, it can be a probation or a.
I don't know if it's.
Treatment sales, whatever, I mean, I'm trying to keep pressure off the general fund.
Right, but also the board doesn't have to agree with the request.
Well, no, but maybe we would if it was a different fund. I'm, I'm more inclined to support other funds that have revenue.
I'd certainly look to see if there are other funds that this could legitimately be charged against, we can check that out, but I doubt it.
Yeah, and, and also, you know, the board will see what the financial plan for the treatment sales taxes.
That too, but at least it gives us an option.
I, I'll have a circle.
Well, I was just gonna say, this just doesn't seem, is this coming up in a midterm because they wanna seize this opportunity for us to have created a Blake?
Because it's currently funded under Blake, and it has an end date that they are asking to remove. Because they need it for an ongoing purpose, that's why they're bringing it now.
So their argument is if we misunderstood what they wanted about when it was the appropriate time to make this request, and so now they should be able to make it late, or?
I think the proposal was for the board, in front of the board, to find temporary positions to deal with Blake.
But it sounds like what they need is not something that's a midterm, we don't just create new employees because the department has a need in the midterm.
They want to, they're asking now because now is when the position has the end date. So they're asking you to continue the position, remove the end date, and that's why before you know.
Charge it out of general fund.
And charge it to the general fund.
General fund.
These positions fill and working? On Blake or on something non-Blake?
Non-Blake. They, what they say is they've, they're absorbing the cost at this point.
You have options in this position. One is whether, you know, exploring different funding sources, or if it's a permanent request, whether to come back next year.
Okay. Moving on to page three, line 11 is the general fund from juvenile court. They are going to reduce the revenue that they receive from the national school breakfast lunch program. They say that very few jurisdictions are continuing to go down the odorless paperwork to get this small amount of money. However, they are asking that they not have to reduce expenditures in accordance, because they're still providing food when they have people.
Boy, that's a lot of money for the few meals they give. I think there's only about, I think they're running about five people.
They're probably not pulling in this much revenue either, but they've budgeted this much, so. But there won't be this much revenue, it's coming out. So when you look at the forecast and there's that, in the policy level, there's money going down, this is a piece of it.
You know, most of those kids in there have some kind of a drug problem or something.
So you, you, in this line, you could tell them to continue to do the administrative burden to collect, it's not this much money, because they don't have this many kids in.
Right.
Or you could tell them, if you're gonna reduce your revenue by $24,000, you also need to find a way to reduce expenditures by $24,000. That's what they're asking to not have to do.
Well, and they're asking out of the general fund, and I'm saying those kids have problems, and most of them are mental or drug-related, and they could get it out of the treatment sales tax.
So, can you clarify that again, Robin, please, real quickly? So, basically, they're asking for not to collect the 24,000, and that's kind of not really $24,000, just because.
We can look at how much they're actually collecting. Yeah, that seems to leave thirteen on the table, but the little description here says they're short, so we gotta look into this one.
Okay, because that one's...
Yeah, this one's a little confusing. So we'll check that.
One second, yeah, I don't know.
We'll have better information in October. Page two is for District Court. This, this has a very long story. We thought that District Court needed a position for Blake, but they don't. And apparently, what they were asking for is a probation counselor position that they need. So they are asking to, instead of pay for this out of Blake funding, to just pay for it from the general fund and remove the end date. Did I kinda capture that?
Yeah.
I'm looking at Romero. He's aware of this.
Which is, which is, it doesn't meet the intended purpose, purpose in which that position was created. That position was created to deal with the Blake-related issues. So they haven't utilized that position for Blake, and now District Court really is asking the board to fund this position on a permanent basis using general fund for other purposes.
What, what position does the, I mean, why not treatment sales tax? I don't know, I mean, what? I'm just kinda curious.
It's just probation.
The why?
It's all probation.
Why? It can be, it can be a probation or a
I don't know if it's
Treatment sales, whatever. I mean, I'm trying to keep pressure off the general fund.
Right, but also the board doesn't have to agree with the request.
Well, no, but maybe we would if it was a different fund. I'm, I'm more inclined to support other funds that have revenue. But this one doesn't.
Look to see if there are other funds that this could legitimately be charged against. We can check that out, but I doubt it.
Yeah, and, and also, you know, the board will see what the financial plan for the treatment sales taxes.
That too, but at least it gives us an option.
I, go ahead, sir.
Well, I was just gonna say, this just doesn't seem... Is this coming up in a midterm? Because they wanna seize this opportunity for us to have created a Blake?
Because it's currently funded under Blake, and it has an end date that they are asking to remove because they need it for an ongoing purpose. That's why they're bringing it now.
So their argument is if we misunderstood what they wanted about when it was the appropriate time to make this request, and so now they should be able to make it late?
I think the proposal was for the board, in front of the board, to find temporary positions to deal with Blake. And they
But it sounds like what they need is not something that's
Yeah, they can change.
We don't just create new employees because a department has a need in the midterm.
They want to, they're asking now because now is when the position has the end date. So they're asking you to continue the position, remove the end date. And that's why
Charge it out of the general fund.
And charge it to the general fund.
Okay.
These positions fill and working? On Blake or on something non-Blake?
Non-Blake. They, what they say is they've, they're absorbing the cost at this point.
You have options in this position. One is whether, you know, exploring different funding sources, whether if it's a permanent request, whether to come back next year.
Okay. Moving on to page three. Line eleven is the general fund from juvenile court. They are going to reduce the revenue that they receive from the National School Breakfast Lunch Program. They say that very few jurisdictions are continuing to go down the odorous paperwork to get this small amount of money. However, they are asking that they not have to reduce expenditures in accordance, because they're still providing food when they have people
Boy, that's a lot of money for the few meals they give. I think there's only about, I think they're running about five people.
Probably not pulling in this much revenue either, but they've budgeted this much, so. But there won't be this much revenue. It's coming out. So when you look at the forecast, and there's that in the policy level, there's money going down. This is a piece of it.
You know, most of those kids in there have some kind of a drug problem or something.
So you, you, in this line, you could tell them to continue to do the administrative burden to collect it's not this much money, because they don't have this many kids in.
Right.
Or you could tell them, if you're gonna reduce your revenue by twenty-four thousand dollars, you also need to find a way to reduce expenditures by twenty-four thousand dollars. That's what they're asking to not have to do.
Well, and they're asking out of the general fund, and I'm saying those kids have problems. Most of them are mental or drug-related, and they could get it out of the treatment sales tax.
So, can you clarify that again, Robin, please, real quickly? So basically, they're asking for not to collect the twenty-four thousand, and that's kind of not really twenty-four thousand dollars, just because
We can look at how much they're actually collecting. It's not that much.
And then for us to reimburse them out of the general fund, basically to kinda cover that gap.
That's right.
But it's a gap.
It would just, it would just be a hit on the general fund fund balance. It's, it's
It wouldn't be twenty-four thousand, you're saying?
They have booked twenty-four thousand. We're expecting twenty-four thousand. They're not collecting twenty-four thousand. So they would wipe out the entire twenty-four thousand in that revenue line. Even though, so like, right now, when you see this, this so on this sheet, where this here's for this year, the budget revenue, and it is probably in intergovernmental payments, I'm gonna guess. It's not a good example. So it may be in charges for services. See how charges for services? We budgeted seventeen million, but we're really gonna bring in sixteen. And the school lunch program isn't worth this delta, but it contributes to why we're under-collecting in one of these categories. So they're gonna take the whole twenty-four thousand out, because we're not gonna collect any. And they want to not affect this budgeted number for their expenditures. When you
I'm just trying to make sure that they're not getting a windfall out. You understand what I'm saying? Like, I'm trying to figure out the accounting. If we take twenty-four thousand out, but they really aren't spending that, are they gonna reap the debt, the delta? Let's say they're spending ten.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, well, that's what I don't support. So however we can account for this so that they actually just get backfill for what they're actually losing versus it being more.
All right.
We shouldn't be supporting
You work with Georgia to try to sort that out.
Commissioner Menzio articulated that better than my concern. I mean, better than I did, same concern.
All right. So the next line, line twelve, is the sheriff law enforcement. You will recall that one of the items on the whiteboard, when we talked about priorities, were additional deputies. So this is the cost of two additional deputy positions, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, almost half a million. Then there's also, line thirteen, is the tech that those new deputies would need. And line fourteen is the cars that they would need. But four hundred and eighty-eight thousand against the general fund.
For road.
For two. Or if you wanna increase the road diversion by that much more, you certainly could do that. On page four, line fifteen, the change number is N-oh-five. This is also a request from the sheriff for just under eight thousand dollars for the armored car pickup of daily deposits.
Can I ask about this? Because we approved, this was something that we discussed back in
But you didn't approve the money?
Because there were gonna be other options discussed, right? Or could, because it was the clerk's office, it was the treasurer. And so is there a possibility that everyone could fall under one contract? And at that point, we were told that, you know, well, we're gonna look into kind of what our options are.
And we had a discussion.
We, we had, in fact, a couple of discussions. And we looked at the possibility to consolidate all the many different contracts. But that was not possible, because it's gonna cost us more. And in, in Nicole, the treasurer's office went through a great level of extent analyzing that. So we did explore exactly what the board required us to do. And, and it just didn't materialize, because the, for instance, public works have their own contract when they take money from the work. And it's all the many different funds, and the management of the different funds, how that is allocated became extremely complex and more expensive. So we did explore that.
I don't know why somebody just can't go to the bank. There's not much money involved anymore.
There you go.
But we explored that with, with the sheriff's office as well, and they didn't think that it was appropriate for a sheriff to spend time again, those deficits.
Maybe somebody from the treasurer's office or
Well, the treasurer's office, their pickup is gonna be at the atrium.
Right, then you gotta chain of custody. And I mean, there's, there's, there were all kinds of issues raised.
We looked at the possibility to build a safe deposit box here, and it becomes even more expensive. We did look at options.
Yeah.
So the issue is that the sheriff takes its money here at this building, not at the jail or somewhere else.
Correct.
Right here.
And so because the treasurer and the sheriff are together right now, and they'll be in two different places, that's the increase.
Is an additional location, additional pickup.
Yep.
Location. And the key is, they have to deposit everything the same day. That's important.
Yep. That's state law. So that's that one.
That must be one of those reasons why we have consolidated locations. I just couldn't pass that.
Already moved public health out. And so page five is line sixteen, M-ten-oh-six. Also a request from the sheriff. They're asking for seventy-eight hundred dollars funding for a permit module that would support their cashier system. So it's tech. And they have listed the benefits here. So
Software needs.
Is this related to some just happened, spontaneous opinion? Change in law, or, I mean, how, how does this fit into our guidelines for midterm adjustments, policy requests?
So I if I were to put it in a bucket under what our rules are for a midterm request, I would say it's an unanticipated need. Because they are, they say they have a system and that their current system is close to failure. And they're very concerned about that. So they wanna add the module to their current provider for other items. The board can certainly take the risk that the current thing they have will last another year, but
What's Dennis say about this?
That is a great question. I do not recall this coming before the ITC.
And it's worth asking.
I don't know why it would not have come before the ITC it should have. The next item on line seventeen on page six is also a system-related need.
I guess I'd say, is that also
This is so this is software that would save them money in doing pre-employment background investigations for hiring. And they do have an extreme vacancy rate in the sheriff and corrections. So this would help to support that. That is five thousand dollars against the general fund.
I have the same questions, I would assume, from the previous item.
Right? Yeah, why, why didn't it go through the ITC? Then we have
Just to get a thumbs up.
Yep, yep. Generally, we do, any, any software before it comes through the board goes to the ITC in general, but for some reason, I have not seen this. Line eighteen, also from law enforcement. You may recall that the sheriff entered a contract with Tactical Athlete Performance Institute. They call it rebound. It gets sheriff and deputies who are injured back to work faster is the goal of this. My understanding that they absorb the cost. But they are now asking for that contract to be funded at twenty-seven thousand a year. Didn't they absorb the original contract? I don't
When, when the board review this item, and I recall this, they didn't, although they, they will absorb in the current year, you will be asked to
For, to fund for the future years. So here's the ask.
So here we are. And that was one of the, the comments I provided to the
And then on page eight, also general fund. This is corrections. And this is the new item that was brought included last week that came to our attention last, last week. It was last Thursday. So you may recall that the sheriff, the undersheriff actually came and talked to you about the change that the sheriff was requesting to make in the medical services contract with the jail. And we were going from eighteen hours a day for a medical provider to twenty-four hours. We knew that that was gonna cost more.
I think Tammy brought that up too, under Risk.
Tammy may have, have mentioned it as a risk.
Big deal on a settlement out of, I wanna say Spokane County.
It is, it is a big deal. And the county is carrying a good deal of risk right now, not having a twenty-four-seven medical available in the jail. So that is a very reasonable thing for the sheriff to be doing. Their contract ends this year. Now is the time to make that change, which is why you're seeing that in a midterm instead of waiting for next year. However, the big surprise, we thought that it would go up around a hundred thousand, and you had a conversation with the undersheriff about using the
Contract bid.
Contract bid money to cover that, right? Well, the contract increased when we got one bid from the current provider, and the increase is six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. So what you see in this change request, the conversation
They didn't go back out, try and get any more bids?
There really isn't any point in trying to go out for more bids. We, we could certainly do that if that's the board's direction. We could ask the sheriff to redo the RFP.
But That's quite, that's quite a bit more than anticipated.
Extreme increase, and we'll have the
Is a, is a niche of services.
It is.
Very narrow.
You think about the rise in cost and the scarcity of providers in healthcare. That makes this understandable.
Development as a late correctional facilities.
Well, well, there's that. But that we're not providing the medical full-time now is, that's one of the things. So I don't think we wanna go back on scope, and even if we did, it wouldn't take us down this much. So the conversation I had last week with the undersheriff is they are willing to give up four hundred thousand of the contract bid money. That offsets all but two hundred and sixty-two thousand. The contract housing money in the current budget is four hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So the part of what you need to think about as a board is how much are you going to leave for contract housing in the corrections budget? And I think it's reasonable to leave some there, even though we're not using that contract bids at all since October of twenty nineteen. You should leave some money in the corrections budget in case the population increases tremendously, but
There's, there's also issues that develop about co-conspirators and such like that on major cases.
Yeah, haven't had a need for two and a half years, but there's, it's possible. So the sheriff is proposing that you leave sixty-eight thousand. You may want to leave a little less, but that's part of the, what to think about. But there's not another two hundred and sixty thousand to take out of that funding source, and they have given up the majority of it to cover this cost. So this was a very significant hit that we did not anticipate.
Well
The main driver was nurses' salaries increased by thirty dollars an hour. That was just the increase. Thirty, did I tell you that?
I'm not saying that this is not a really good thing to do, but what was good to do at a hundred thousand may not be as good to do at six hundred and sixty-two thousand. I mean, this is not a maintenance level, legal mandate, contractual. I mean, we don't have to do this, right?
We must provide medical services to people in our jails.
I understand that, but for the last however many years, we've been providing them on this schedule.
We, we
Nothing happened this year that said, oh, what you're doing is illegal.
I'm not sure, something, something did happen.
But are, something happened.
I haven't heard it yet, so
Tammy needs, Tammy needs to come in and explain. There's a couple pending cases.
We are going to have the sheriff and Tammy come in in that first week of October and explain why twenty-four-seven is the right thing to do with medical.
This is not twenty-four-seven.
This does take us to twenty-four-seven. It takes us to twenty-four-seven, and it, it
That's not what was described to us by the undersheriff. I thought it took us from, to a higher level, like eighteen hours or something.
No, we're, we're currently at eighteen hours. This takes us to twenty-four-seven.
And I think when this was presented to the board, it was an expectation that could cost an addition of a hundred thousand, but the request proposals was six hundred thousand.
Fifty thousand, another half million, what's another half million?
Because we have one bid from, from the current provider, they're going to go back. We think it's appropriate under our procurement rules that they go back to the provider and say, is this the best? Can we, is there any room for negotiation? They cannot change the scope. If we were to change the scope, they'd have to go back out to bid. But they will have a conversation with the provider to see if there's any way to bring this down. But this, this does take us to twenty-four-seven. Even if we stayed at eighteen hours, it wouldn't, the, the big impact was the cost of nursing.
It will get increased as well, but not as much.
Yeah, not this much. So, we're bringing in the
We're going to Possibility, the detention sales tax, and how the fund could be part of the composition. Well, this is max, the detention sales tax, I believe, is maxed out. That could be a possibility to explore, yeah?
Yeah.
But Robin, can you move this slide so the
Oh, that's true. So sorry, thank you for mentioning that. I did not advance that.
We're already on page.
All right. So page eight, line twenty, the change order is M-twenty-two-oh-five. It's the insurance risk rate adjustment. It's a contribution to the, the risk fund is three-point-three million. The general fund share of that is just under two million. And then all other funds, one-point-three million. And then all other funds, one point three million. Let me talk about what the policy choice around that is. Starting on page nine and scrolling over to page ten is the request from Public Defense. It's against the general fund and they're asking for a hundred and seven thousand to have a data and business applications management person. The reason that this is coming now in a midterm is their new system just got installed and put up. So the need, they did not have the need before this. And they hadn't anticipated the need.
Would this person be housed under Public Defense or I T?
They are proposing that this person be housed under I T. And the way to think about it, the reason that this would not be in I T is because we house the people in I T that do county-wide type services in our systems. And if you have a system specific or a, a system that is specific to your business, like Public Defense does, then we house the business analyst that supports that system in that officer department. And if you think about the support for our financial system is in financial services. They have a business manager. In CPED, there is the business manager for Amanda. This is a brand-new system in Public Defense and they're asking for a person to support it.
Does this position have an end date?
No, because the system won't end. It's not the implementation of the system, it's the ongoing need to support the system.
So this was a launch of a program that was parallel in the prosecutor's office. Do they have this position as well?
Prosecutor already had a position, is my understanding.
Through a grant.
Yeah, through grant. There's his grant funded.
An ongoing?
Yes.
I, I, I really need to talk to, I don't understand the need.
We need to look into that.
Yeah, I really don't truly understand the need at this point, but.
I mean, I, yeah, it's tough because sometimes, I mean, I can see a need, but it's always easier to hire a full-time employee, but sometimes the need doesn't match up to a full-time employee, you know? Like, does this person can, you know, can an I T person, maybe a half, let's just say, let's just say they really need half an F T E to do this work. What do we do? You know, do we hire an F T E and then that person does what the other half the time? Or do we hire an I T person and assign half of their work to, to this and then half to something else? I mean, I, I don't know, but, and I'm just making those numbers up, but it feels like, I'd love, I'd like to get the need met, but it may not, the answer may not be a full-time employee for Public Defense just to deal with this particular system.
Other work goes out for a contract to meet that need, you know, with that group.
Right, a consultant or some caller or something.
So I think that's a good point because as I agree with national data and really it's more of a, an analysis of the data the E defender will provide. And that's a great question, whether the need is a full-time forty hours a week. That that person will be dedicated just to data management analysis is a great question.
All right, so I've got that note here. We may invite Patrick to come chat. Line twenty-three on page eleven, also from Public Defense. They are asking for an additional full-time defense attorney and a legal assistant position. I don't know how this is enough money. But for the involuntary treatment act in immigrant courts. And they would bill this to the B H A S O.
And it has, and it has a public general fund.
I know. It is in the general fund because they would pay for it out of the general fund and then they would bill the B H A S O and that's revenue into the general fund to support it.
Like this eighty-eight thousand covered two positions.
Well, that's what I said. There was professional service, I believe, that they have right now that they're using.
Or the, the panel attorneys, the country's panel attorneys?
They would use to offset it. Yeah.
Okay, okay. That, that makes sense.
That makes more sense.
The panel attorneys, okay.
So they're proposing to bring these in-house? Correct. Thank you, Patty.
And that general fund deduction would be?
It would be billed out to the B H A S O. They would pay for it legally. You may recall that by state law, the B H A S O must pay the county's costs for running the I T A.
Verification of that description, the description that asks for, request to a full-time defense attorney to even legal assistant, what? To create two positions. To create two. Yeah, so I, I think.
Yeah.
Still watching that.
Okay. The next item on page eleven, line twenty-four is M twenty-five O one. We're not going to get through all of these by eleven forty-five, so we'll try to get through the rest of this page. This is against the central service facilities fund. This adds a, a senior office assistant for the information desk at the atrium. And it's coming now because we're moving this here.
So where would they be sitting? Would they be sitting?
So you know that cork, when you come in, there's going to be a desk right there and the person would sit there and they'd be the receptionist, if you will.
For the building.
For the building.
And so they would be there full-time?
Yep.
That wouldn't be, couldn't be our receptionist, I think.
No, because Brandy will sit on the, on the commissioner's desk.
And couldn't we used to have that back in the day? There was someone that sat back down there and
Used to be somewhere downstairs.
In that, in that little space right there and they would, was that a full-time position?
Yes. Yes, and then we cut that position to save money and we tried to have a deal with the offices that were supported by that position, but they didn't want to contribute staff to the effort. Then we tried to put our front office person down there and that did not work at all.
And then we partnered with Morningside at some point.
Yes, we did that and.
To see if we can provide a training.
Another one of solubation issues.
There were, yeah, there were some other concerns there and then, then we tried a kiosk for a while and that did not work well at all. So we've tried a number of things and because we're not putting a security officer in the new building, which many offices wanted, we're not doing that. We're going to pay much less and have a receptionist.
Direct traffic.
Yeah, direct traffic. That's a nice way to put it.
Will the receptionist have a panic button?
Yes.
Yeah, this one, yeah, will have, yeah, dress button, yeah.
A dress button, a panic button over here.
Yes, yes.
Yes, they will.
And we can't pay this out of any other fund.
It's coming out of the central services facilities fund, so not general fund.
But it, it's sixty percent of its contribution.
It will eventually be built in rates.
Right.
But, yep, everywhere else.
Okay.
M twenty-five is the E R N R. This is the impact of supporting the E R N R fund, the maintenance fund. This is to cover those increased costs of fuel. To check and make sure this doesn't show up twice. Then we have the M two-seven O three, line twenty-seven, also an impact to the general fund. Where the CPED is asking, they have a P I O. And right now, that person only does communications work around land use and permitting items. They would like to have that person do more broad support to the whole department, which would mean that they could not be charged a hundred percent to the land use and permit fund. So what you see in these four other funds is redistributing a portion of that person's work. The thirteen, fourteen thousand hit on the general fund.
Before you go on, on that, on that fuel.
Yep, back to, back to line twenty-five?
Yeah, back to twenty-five. Isn't that covered earlier in here by?
I thought I saw something in mentions on that, so I need to double check on that.
I think there's a double entry here going somewhere.
I'm going to check that. Yep, thank you. I noticed that too. Okay, line thirty-two is CPED is requesting from their land use and permit fund five thousand dollars to put equipment in their break room at the atrium. And it's this type of equipment, screens and so that they can pull up computers and stuff. And then because the, the, what we're not paying for in equipment at the atrium is individual office and department new equipment. We're for specific break rooms, like we're not buying new computers for everybody. We're not putting brand-new tech in all the, the break rooms or the, the conference rooms. Not break rooms, the conference rooms. So if someone wants brand-new tech for their new conference room, they have to buy it themselves out of their officer department budget. And CPED is asking that you give them additional appropriation to do that. No one else has asked for additional appropriation to do that. Line thirty-four, they haven't asked for it out of the general fund, though they have asked for it out of their restricted funds. Line thirty-four, M twenty-seven O eight, also from CPED, this is a general fund request to increase the W S U to cover the salary increase that the legislature has authorized for W S U employees. Two thousand dollars next year, less than a thousand dollars this year. Line thirty-five is general fund from CPED and they will be coming to talk to you about this. The revenue coming into the land use and permit fund is not as high as they had projected.
Where are we at now, thirty-five?
We're on line thirty-five. They are attributing this to the backlog of applicants. So they are asking for an operating transfer that's a one-time thing this year to infuse the fund balance or protect the fund balance of the general fund.
I don't, I don't know.
Permit fund.
Yeah, I've something.
Yeah, yeah, it would be an infusion from the general fund. So they take about seven hundred.
Why one time? Why, how come it would only be one time?
We're going to bring the financial plan for this fund so you can see what it's doing and why one time gives them enough room for, to wait for their revenue to come back to projected levels once they work through the backlog.
Because they've got a pretty good revenue that you're going to remember, right?
Is the ending fund balance wise, I think is the conversation.
It's the ending fund balance, that's the problem.
Because there is a, is on the application fees, there is a gap as to when they can get the fees associated with the permits they do, which they have to rely on the, on the ending fund balance to cover the expenses. And the ending fund balance, everyone is suffering the, the consequence of that.
So we'll, we'll be bringing you the, their financial plan and Josh will come and have the conversation with you about this. So we should wrap this up and pick up at page thirteen when we come back this afternoon at one thirty. It's a good place to stop.
I'm sure you want to recess.
Oh, yes, that's me.
Can you stop, Sharon?
So we will be back at one thirty P M and we will pick up. So we are on break until that. Thank you.
Thank you.